Continue and give the full path expiration. But since no work was being done at all, at all, it comes to where it needs to go in front of y'all.
Where's this, what's this location at?
It is right next to the Hyatt and Oak's apartments across from Sears, the April 4th.
Not a stroke or a...
What is, you said it's, Council can take the action upon the recommendation out of...
An extension of the building permit.
What is your recommendation?
Um, I do recommend that you extend this permit. He has contacted Phelps, they are back on, apparently they have a lot of work going on all over the county. And I'd be honest with you, I don't know exactly when they will get to his property set pulse.
Now, this extension would be good for another year or another six months?
Well, that's the thing, according to this, it doesn't give us a time to extend it out. Permits are generally good for six months.
They have started some work out there, correct?
Um, from what I understand, they've started re, or done doing their work.
They're conservators too, because they haven't out there looked at some, some poles, I don't know if that's what, Trump's gonna put the pole or that's another, they're conservators, but they got about fifty, sixty, seventy.
Uh, the front thing, I think those are for pedestals.
Well, they're working, don't they?
The recommendation is to, to extend it and the normal extension would be for the permanent date of six months. So, I make the motion to approve the extension on the electrical permit for Oscar Garcia's special use permit at twenty-two, twenty, Tenth Street.
Can I have a motion by Councilman Nether, second by Councilman Valones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, aye, zero.
Yes, Cindy, just out of question, just out of curiosity, if we were to have denied the, the extension, would he have had to go through P and Z again and, and go through all this, uh, to, to get everything reestablished?
I'm not exactly sure, Mr. Rodriguez, I would think this is something legal would have to look into. This is the first time I ever had to encounter this, so I couldn't be sure.
Ms. Cindy, do we assume that it's gonna be six months or should we put a timeline on it? Because as the motion was made, it was not timed.
Well, is the, the permit time period is six months?
Six months, which is a hundred eighty days.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, you said you weren't sure for how long?
Well, typically our permits are good for six months, a hundred eighty days. So, while y'all rat him down, it would be six months.
So, you're gonna follow the same button?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna go on to item three, B, consideration in action to approve the proclamation for the March of Life sponsored by the Knights of Columbus Hall.
I'm the mayor of the city council. My name is Jose Rodriguez, I'm Mr. Zupa Casanova, and we're here on behalf of Roadblock Castle sixty-six, forty-one, to extend on an invitation to our March for Life, this is on October the twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, at the Knights of Columbus Hall. And we've come before you to ask for permission for the, for the march, for the streets. We've already spoken to Lorenzo, to the chief of police. And we've just come before you as representatives of the Knights of Columbus, for the March of Life, for permission for usage for the streets and for the march. And also an invitation for y'all to join us in the July, the February, to the city council, to the mayor.
What day was that?
October the twenty-sixth.
Saturday.
Yes, sir. At seven, eight, seven AM, at the Knights of Columbus Hall.
Seven AM?
Yes, sir.
Just procedurally, the police chief would have the ability to approve the closing of the streets.
Yes.
We as the council, based upon the agenda, are not taking action on approving the street closures, but rather the proclamation.
We have a pro-life proclamation, and it reads, whereas we live in a society where violence is often portrayed in entertainment industry as a solution to our problems, and whereas we are frequently faced with people in all walks of life who act out this violence in schools, post offices, fast food restaurants, and other public venues. And whereas there have been a number of recent acts of violence perpetrated against abortion industry personnel, whereas certain individuals and groups have taken the responsibility for these acts and claim to be part of a pro-life movement. And whereas a small number of allegedly pro-life groups have held those perpetrating violence acts as heroes. And whereas the media has given inordinate publicity to these alleged pro-life fringe groups while ignoring the statements of established genuine quote, "pro-life organizations" and leaders condemning the violence. And whereas it is clear from the events of recent weeks that there is an attempt to portray the entire pro-life movement as criminal and hateful campaign. We, the undersigned, do hereby issue this proclamation in order to set the record straight. We declare that the deliberate cold-blooded killing of human beings from fertilization to natural death is always wrong. This belief is the essence of what it means to be pro-life. And we declare that the pro-life movement acknowledges that every individual human being is created in God and His image and likeness. We do hereby proclaim that it is the purpose of the pro-life movement to restore full legal protection to all human beings from fertilization to natural death using peaceful and prayerful means in the pursuit of the goal. Uh, once we sign it, I'll give the...
Thank you. Can I have a motion? As mayor, I move to approve the proclamation for the March of Life sponsored by the Knights of Columbus. May I have a second?
A second.
Can I have a motion by Councilwoman Castillo, second by Councilwoman Gómez, are you in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, aye, zero. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to consideration in action to those city holidays for the year twenty-fourteen.
Well, the same though? Same as this here, do I?
Yes, sir, it is. Um, and I have in there as well a copy of the approved, thank you very much. I have a copy of the approved county dates as well. The only difference is that we have with the county now is the Thursday before Peanut Festival. We have that on our calendar, but we do not have the third day for Christmas. Uh, the county used to take the, the Thursday for Peanut Festival because of the streets out here are closed and it's, it's, you don't have access to the buildings. At five o'clock on Wednesday, the carnival starts moving in and this whole section of the street is closed. You're getting in, there's no way for a vehicle to get into City Hall. Um, the county used to take it off when they were here at the courthouse, but now that they moved down to the annex, um, they don't have that issue where the street's closed. So, they took that holiday and, and rolled it into three days at Christmas time.
They still have the same thirteen and thirteenth, or really?
Yes, it's the same, it's the same amount of, of holidays as the county. That's the only difference is, is the Peanut Festival one, and the reason that we take it, um, is again because City Hall is inaccessible. However, we do not take Columbus Day, which the holiday falls on the Monday after Peanut Festival. Because we take the holiday for Peanut Festival, we do not recognize Columbus Day in our holidays.
Reggie, you said to me in one of our meetings about Peanut Festival, that during Peanut Festival is an extremely busy time for city employees as it is in particular our streets and utilities folks getting stuff out to support the Peanut Festival. On these days, what is their holiday rate of pay? Is it one and a half times, two times?
Um, it's, it's regular pay. And we don't, it's a holiday pay, is that right? Uh, we only have the on call, the on-call crew is the only one.
Just answer the question, is holiday pay one and a half times or two times?
Well, if it's the on-call crew, then they're on overtime.
On a, on a holiday?
If the holiday pay is regular straight holiday pay. There's, it's not timed. Police officers are different. Yeah, police, okay, police officers are different. And maybe a holiday.
But the on-call crew is making overtime pay?
If, they get called out. And we try to do everything ahead of time. Uh, the guys will come in at four AM on Wednesday and they clean the streets and they get everything done. Um, and then the, generally, the only time is if there's a water leak, uh, something like that, just their regular hours. But the on-call crew doesn't get called out really for anything extra during Peanut Festival. They can, Peanut Festival handles all of that on their own.
Well, it's just a regular, regular holiday.
It's just a regular holiday, yes, sir. It's just a holiday like any of the others.
Who does it clean up on Sunday?
Um, the Peanut Festival hires out to do that. Um, they were, have been hiring some of the city employees because they know the routes and they know, you know, have access to the dumpsters and those kinds of things. However, Mr. Joe Hernandez is who they contracted for in the past, and unfortunately, he's suffered a stroke this year and is unable to, so they contracted out with somebody different. Um, it is something that we are looking at on Monday, and we're gonna have to have our crews probably do additional cleanup. We've already talked to our crews and we know that all departments are gonna be helping with cleanup, just to make sure that the city is up and back running on Monday, Thursday.
Now, on, on this, on Saturday, I've heard some, some issues about the, uh, the yard for the, for the dump over there to, that it's gonna be open. Is, is there any way to, to have that, have that? I mean, how many people are, are there to demand that?
Well, the, the problem, the, the reason that it's open, it's on the schedule to be open. Um, and with people that are cleaning up, we've actually had people ask us if that, if we're gonna be there on that weekend because we're from out of town, but we're coming in. Um, we discussed it, it was made, Ruby, who is the public works, made the decision to leave the dump open. Um, it was put on the regular schedule, the same thing with, you know, the, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Christmas, you know, those holidays as well. Um, although we're all on Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving, on Saturday, the dump is up schedule. It's something you can look at and we do the schedule next year. Um, it has been utilized in the past. There are people that will go and dump trash on that Saturday morning, um, and that's why it was kept on the schedule.
What, what do you mean by people who are from out of town and they're coming in?
They're in for Peanut Festival and if they do clean up, they know the dumpster is able to throw all items away.
But if they're from out of town, where are they using, or?
If it's a city lot in town, if they're cleaning up a city lot in town. You know, they own the lot, but they're from out of town. And, and to you that you do have to have, you know, a copy of your water bills, some, some utility bill, which shows which you live in the city. Um, we, we did have, it was questioned if we can get them open, however, it is on the schedule, um, and we made the decision to...
It's all, it's all in the open, right?
Yes, it's all in the open on a Saturday.
Mary, till noon?
Yes, from May to noon, regular time, but it, it has continued to be open.
So, on Thursday and Friday, there are no crews, no full crew working or no other employees working, just on, and how many are on-call?
Uh, we have a team of five on-call, um, and it rotates every year. And it just depends, now, if there's five on-call, that doesn't mean if a water leak happens, all five go out. The lead on the on-call crew will go out and, uh, address the issue. And if he needs one person, he calls one of the on-call crew. If there's a huge leak, and they need all five, then all five get called in. Uh, but the lead on the crew takes, takes care of that. We have barricades, they do use our barricades as the areas where they close off the streets during the parade. All of that stuff is put out with Peanut Festival on Wednesday night, uh, I'm sorry, they, they put it out, they give it to Peanut Festival on Wednesday night. Therefore, they don't have to come in and use overtime or extra time for those issues, for those items.
I'm concerned that just because the street is filled with the carnival, that we feel the need to shut the city down because city services don't stop. Uh, I'm really concerned about Thursday being the holiday. I know that Phelps and a lot of other businesses, they even included schools in support of the Peanut Festival, know the half-day schedules on Friday, some close full day on Friday. When I'm opposed to shutting down the entire city on a Thursday simply because there's a carnival out there.
And water bills aren't, and are you on the tenth?
And we're assuming to be paid sort of the Monday after. If you make fees, we'll be collecting the, uh, the tenth bills on the Monday after Peanut Festival, which again is generally a holiday, but we got closed out because of, um, Peanut Festival. The barricades go up at five PM on Wednesday. Uh, as of noon, we'll bring the dumpsters in. Republic will start bringing the dumpsters in and put them around City Hall for them to be moved out on Wednesday morning. And as of noon on Wednesday, historically, um, city staff has to find additional parking because our parking is already being taken over by the carnival. Um, by Thursday, there's no access to City Hall, we, you know, we, we have to do anything, we park and we come in. Um, now, they did try to leave City Hall, they, they did take away the Thursday, um, and had City Hall open. It was about three years ago on a Thursday, um, and there was, it was, there was really not...
I don't believe that they will work, uh, if they were to, to be taking away, are we gonna give the employees the day back same Christmas time?
Yes. I mean, you know, Friday after Christmas is, okay, versus shutting down in the middle of the week.
But then it's tough too, you have three days, like, like, I think, uh, the county's got Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off now. So, we, that's, we're in the same place where, can we go that many days?
Well, we would be taking Wednesday, Thursday off, so we would have a work week. It would be Monday, Tuesday, they'd be off Wednesday, Thursday, and then they'd have to come back Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would much rather keep city, city services operating Monday through Thursday now and then during the holiday season, give them that, that five-day weekend at Christmas, uh, that Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the weekend.
The way I see it, the, on, if, if, if they come in at five PM on Wednesday, they're already on overtime and then they work, you know, at all that, all that time anyways, you know, working on that, uh, you know, working because their, their time in at four o'clock.
And I, and I sort of wanna look at it to the safety issue because they block these streets right here and somebody runs over a water over, somebody, somebody working on the carnival, you know, still, it's not a... I mean, I'm, I'm not for taking a day, I want, you know, like you're saying, Christmas time will give back. But I look at it more as a, a safety issue because this street is completely blocked, there's no way to come in here, I, I...
But my, my point is not the city staff and City Hall, is we have the streets crews, we've got waters crews, we've got wastewater plant employees, they don't work in this building. They work in other parts of the city. Whether they can get to this building or not, you know, just because the carnival's out there, their work doesn't stop.
It actually sends them back, this way.
They come in at three in the morning and they're off, the, the crews.
How productive would it be to, to have them, to have those crews work on the, on a full, on a full day of Thursday instead of working morning?
And they're off.
Working the, working the, after five o'clock on, on, on Wednesday? Is that, is it that closure, or they're setting up the barricades and everything?
They do it during the day, they don't do it, they, they, at Peanut Festival, it's around noon on Wednesday that they come and pick the barricades up.
Don't some of the employees come in that are out there in the yard, early in the morning, like, say, three, four in the morning, and do what they have to do and then?
They do, they come in and they use the sweeper and they go around and they cleaning all of the downtown blocks um, to make sure that it's done prior to them coming in and starting the street construction.
They're already, they're already coming in at four AM on Wednesday, and then at five PM, they're gonna, there's, there's, they're gonna start all the street closures, correct?
We don't do the street closure.
But what, what do the city crews need to have after, after five PM or Wednesday?
Nothing, when they, you know, when, like I said, the Peanut Festival picks up the barricades around noon on Wednesday, and they're responsible for setting the barricades up and removing them, and then they leave them in a designated place, usually under the big oak tree between where the probation office is and the donuts, you know. They'll leave all our barricades there and the city crew will pick them up on Monday morning.
And then they're still gonna work their, their full day, their, their, it'll be a full hour day for them?
Um, it depends on if the workload permits it. Um, if they come in at, you know, four AM and at noon, if there's no water leaks and they're done with all of their cleaning and everything, so that they don't go on to, which you won't have overtime because of the holidays. But if there's, you know, if they work their eight hours and there's nothing major going on, then they, most of the crew will go. And they usually keep a skeleton crew, uh, just for anything, and it's usually one supervisor and one...
Kind of tough, I think it would have been better off talking to, you know, if this has been working for, for years and then all of a sudden, they took the, it, it doesn't matter to me, you know, but, I think I say, oh, not even thinking with this. This should have been probably discussed a couple of months back and said, we'll talk, we're talking to you, they'll maybe quit for another day somewhere.
Oh, this is their schedule for next year?
I know it's next, kind of, but whatever. Or we can, we can pay more than talk to, to the employees and says for the next year and say, well, what do you, what do you have prefer, the Christmas? Or, it doesn't matter, or?
Yeah, what, what are you gonna do if the employees are split?
We can just make a decision.
Or make a decision.
Uh, I think they would prefer five days at Christmas, then, you know, that's just what I would think.
What we can do is we can approve to have a skeleton crew, uh, it's, I mean, it, it's, you know, again, it's one of those things, you know, a water leak comes up, the, the on-call crew's gonna have to go out. It's just, you know, here in City Hall.
Well, there's a decision, mayor.
It's in, it's inaccessible.
Here's why, actually, we were talking about closing Thursday and Friday, and they're, they're worth one of those days, making it up on Monday, which is, and they, they would have been off for a holiday, Columbus Day. Because Christmas falls on a Tuesday, and you're talking about closing City Hall the whole week?
Thursday.
It's off Thursday.
Okay, so I'm looking at the calendar right here and say...
That's on the next year.
I printed on like twenty thirteen. So, that was for the meeting?
Yeah, that's for the...
Yes, next year, um, Christmas falls on a Tuesday, so you're talking about releasing it Christmas the whole week, is that what you're talking about?
No, that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Thursday, Friday, and a half, Thursday.
Saturday, Tuesday, Christmas Day, and then, and the day after Christmas.
Again, the, the schedule was set up because this is the way it's been the last couple of years, um, you know, the changes can be made to it. And again, the county was just an example that we try to keep what, um, the same title that they have, which we know.
I think I'm gonna go and make the motion to, to table it and to wait to hear from, uh, to, to get some input from the, the employees and, and staff to see what the, what their, what their take is on it. So, I'm gonna make the motion to, to table the, the city holidays for twenty-fourteen.
Figuring that out.
I will, sir, I'll set up a meeting with the employees and we'll, we'll, basically give them and tell us what I've...
And I'll give you the form. That probably be the best way, 'cause then, I mean, I know we're here to make the decision, but it'd give them, say, okay, we want five days.
At Christmas, if you want to...
And we want a peanut festival day, I mean, I would rather have a different day.
I'll give it to supervisors and give them all, do a form, just take out to all the employees and each of them can bring back what their, what their opinion is on it, and then I'll forward those on these exercises you can make a decision on.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gómez, second by Councilwoman Gredo to table item three C until we have a chance to get the employees to give their consent. Okay, the last item, I'm sorry. Um, they're taking, uh, item five. All opposed? Motion carries, aye, zero. Okay, our last item, consideration in action to regarding and setting meeting dates for October, November, and December twenty-thirteen.
Speaking of holidays, the meeting dates on here are on the agenda because we've gotta make some decisions because in each of the months, October, November, and December, uh, we have a conflict with holiday and our regular county meetings. In October, the tenth would be our normal, uh, first council meeting, and that's the Thursday of Peanut Festival. Again, we can't get into City Hall. Um, and then we have voting, uh, early voting starts on August, October the twenty-first, and it'll go through November the first. Um, during that time, the, the meeting on the twenty-fourth, obviously, we can have, however, we will have to hold it at the annex uh, because once voting starts in here, we aren't allowed to be in here and do this or that.
Okay, what is wrong with you saying the third of October, October the second? Maybe we went, what we planned?
Could we have our October meeting, uh, instead of having the scheduled meeting on the tenth, move that scheduled meeting to the third, so we're meeting still twice in the month, the third and the twenty-fourth. The twenty-fourth would be at the annex. And then we would do the same thing in November, to have a meeting on the fourteenth, which is the regularly scheduled meeting, and move the second meeting instead of occurring on Thanksgiving, which is the twenty-eighth, to the twenty-first. So, we would still have two meetings in the month. In November, they would be the fourteenth and the twenty-first. And then in December...
I don't remember being on the seventh and the twenty-first because you'd skip a week.
Seventh and the twenty-first, that's fine, I mean, that's... We still need to have two meetings a month simply because the holidays are there, the city's too big, there's too much business. Um, I'm okay with the seventh and the twenty-first in November, and we could do the same thing in December to go to the fifth and the nineteenth.
The only concern I have is, if we have two meetings each in the month, then we'll be calling special meeting like we always do. It's probably better to leave one, one called special meeting, one regular meeting, and then you probably won't call a special meeting anymore.
Well, there's special meetings if they're not on the second or the fourth, Thursday month.
I'm saying, we're having two, say, the, during the seventeenth, then you won't wanna call no longer. Whatever day, you're always do that, that's what I'm saying.
We'll just do it before the meeting, not after the meeting. If we have to have something, we'll just do, start the council meeting earlier.
I make the motion to schedule the meetings for October third and twenty-fourth, November seventh and twenty-first, and December fifth and nineteenth, that's two meetings a month.
Well, I'm good on the discussion on the third, but whoever will be here, I'll be out of town, and that's why I, I'm always a gift of what, so, I'm not for it. Uh, we, we all agree on what, what, you know, some of them are here, some of them are not here, so, to get to the convenience, so, I say no.
I think October the third is gonna be the best, the best deal because we're gonna have a, a new city manager that's coming in and on, on October the first, and, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna need to, you know, square...
I think he's, I think she's coming in October fourth, not October third, so, I, you know, I think it's best for her to, to, to come in as part of the following week from the third would be the better meeting for her.
Okay, well, nothing technically, Sheri, not correct, says that the meeting has to be on a Thursday, right?
That's correct.
So, we could actually have it on the ninth. Correct? We can have it on the ninth and have it on the twenty-fourth.
We can have it at the annex if you choose to do that. Um, but the carnival adds up five o'clock, it's, yeah, you won't be able to do that.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we do have it at the annex.
And on the special meeting, I'm sorry, I'm trying the meeting for the twenty-first, we, we will be holding that at the annex. I need to call and make sure that that's available.
You mean the twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, yes.
The ninth and the twenty-fourth?
I'm just gonna... So, what a trouble we're gonna have.
They, they do, but they, their group isn't available, their courtroom isn't available, where we hold elections in here, we can't, we can't have. So, are you talking about the having the meeting on the ninth, at the annex? If that's what you all choose to do, it can't be called. The ninth and the twenty-fourth?
The ninth and the twenty-fourth is fine.
Then you have the dates early, okay.
November is seven, twenty-one.
And the seventh would be December the fifth and the...
Fifth and the nineteenth, closing one day? I'm ready, so, well, I just...
What happened?
I can be here the same day.
Sorry.
Sorry for your, right? I'm gonna talk to you of convenience, okay?
So, are we...
I don't know what you're saying, it's hard to, to, to your convenience.
What are your proposal, Michael?
I propose that I won't be here, I did, because we all, that we're gonna be here the same day for our proposal.
Yes, I'll turn it to Dick, move the third to the ninth. You don't like the dates, huh?
If it was you, if it was you, you'd pick what you want.
Well, you leave on scheduled meeting days anyways.
You know what, I'll vote no to none, and, and I'm just gonna vote, I'm just gonna vote for the regular meeting that I have.
Okay.
True to all, but it's just what I'm saying, if we're here to work for the city, to just work together, I'm telling you, I'm not gonna be here on that day. But if you were to tell me you're not gonna be here this day, I'd try to work with you.
Well, give us a proposal.
Well, if you were to tell me, because I can't also do some.
Give us a base.
Go ahead.
Okay, I won't be here the 9th, but council can get it all covered for us. But I won't do that.
Well, can we look at another date for, for November? Or we have to look at the. Elections are on November 5th, okay.
Sherri, can we approve the meetings for October and then put on the agenda at the, the 9th of October to approve the meeting dates for November and December? Since we know the 9th and the 24th are acceptable to all of the council members, can we just do October and then readdress the issue, giving other council members the opportunity to look at their calendars and come up with some alternative dates? Okay, then, then if we can put it on the agenda for, for the meeting on the 9th, then I'll make the motion to schedule October meetings for Wednesday the 9th and Thursday the 24th, both meetings to be held at the court, how's that?
And if it's available, if not, I'll find an alternative location.
So, Ms.?
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman J. Seth Y. October, and, and the November, December to be on the next month's agenda. May I have a second?
I'll second.
How are you feeling?
All right.
How opposed? It will be very spicy. And with that, are meetings ended?
Well, Madam Mayor, before you end the meeting, can I just make a quick remark? Tomorrow is, is Mr. Winter's last day as our interim city manager, and I wanted to, to take the opportunity to publicly thank him for the work that he's done as our interim city manager. And I think the council concurs, it was a, a challenging job, and, and he rose to the occasion and did well as our interim city manager, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winter.